Good evening, welcome to this April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting in the North Fork City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnson.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay. Item number five, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And item number six would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Motion in second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Takes us to item number nineteen on the council agenda under special presentations, and tonight I will read a proclamation for April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day. The proclamation reads, whereas in eighteen seventy-two Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, where they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Josh Mooney, Mayor of the City of North Fork, by the power vested in me to hereby proclaim April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two as Arbor Day, in the City of North Fork, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day by supporting efforts to protect trees and woodlands, planting and caring for trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, and participating in a tree planting opportunity on their property or in their neighborhood. And I think to officially receive the proclamation, we'll have our Parks and Recs Director Nate Powell step forward. All right, let me go, next name. So we do have an Arbor Day event planned just next week in the community, correct?
Yeah, Lincoln Montessori School, four-Quay class.
Lincoln Montessori School, okay, very good. And I wanted to note this too, because we just recently within Parks and Rec hired our city's first arborist.
Yes, Lindsay Kadara, yep.
Lindsay, say your last name.
Kadara?
Kadara, okay, very good, okay. So Lindsay has joined us and will be helping us implement tree canopy enhancement plans throughout the community.
That's correct.
Very good, all right, thank you. Okay. Item number twenty, under the regular agenda, I would look for a motion to consider approval of a testing contract with Certified Testing Services Incorporated for the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvements Project for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand dollars.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Anna Allen, our city engineer, city assistant engineer.
Assistant engineer, yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
It's coming, they shut off.
We have a, we put together a spreadsheet here. This kind of goes back to what I talked about previously, but I can recap. Our previous projects that we've worked on here in the city are listed on this spreadsheet, and it has the total construction costs and historically what has been spent on the construction management fees, material testings, and design fees. So if you'll see the past projects that have been done here in the city are, you know, ranging from a ten point five percent, eleven percent, five percent, and that would be the percentage of that total construction cost that is going for the construction management and materials testing. So this project here is for the material testing for the First Street Roundabout and Bridge and River Improvements that is scheduled to start this fall. So this proposal with CTS testing is fifty-six thousand dollars for that material testing. And I'll point out here that the, that total amount, fifty-six thousand, along with the construction management fee, ends up being about three point nine five percent of the total construction costs.
So engaging in this process now will allow for meeting a timeline of potential work to begin in August, was that the timeline?
The schedule hasn't been sent out yet. We're awaiting pre-construction meeting with the contractor. We'll have that scheduled out soon after that.
Anna, this was included in the total overall bid, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It has been budgeted for.
Any other questions? Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item twenty-one, I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-two to terminate the occupation tax on lodging and on prepared food and beverage.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Yeah, we actually terminated this occupation tax on November thirtieth, and we did so with a resolution at the October fourth council meeting. This was so everybody would have plenty of time to get their point-of-sale terminals and that type of thing changed, to get rid of the occupation tax on their system. But we left the code as it was, because that is what gave us the actual authority to enforce the collection of that occupation tax. We left that out there until we've collected all the occupation tax, including a delinquent occupation tax. We've now collected all that occupation tax, and would like to get that out of the city code, since it's no longer applicable. And staff recommend doing that on all three readings, since it's really an obsolete section of code at this point. I'd answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any questions or discussion, Council? Okay. Hearing none, please vote.
Yep.
Sorry, short title first.
An ordinance of the City of North Fork, Nebraska to terminate the occupation tax on lodging and on prepared food and beverage enacted by ordinance number fifty-one forty-three on November fifteenth, two thousand ten, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay with that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-two carries on first reading.
Your Honor, due to the fact that we're just eliminating the code and there really isn't any opposition to this, I'm going to propose we suspend the rules and pass this on second and third.
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven seventy-two carries on second and third.
Okay, item twenty-two, I would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to Kenny Porter Construction for twenty-nine thousand dollars to demolish the structures located at Liberty Bell Park.
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. And for some background on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor, Council, thank you. What we have here is three bids for the Liberty Bell Pool demolition. This was sent out for bid because we weren't, we weren't sure it was going to be below fifty thousand. So the three bids are North Fork Construction at ninety-nine thousand, Cuba Construction at thirty-seven thousand seven hundred, and K Porter Construction at twenty-nine thousand. So staff recommends that we award the bid to K Porter Construction. A little history, attendance has been about two to three thousand. It's weather-dependent because it's not a heated pool, so since Aqua Venture opened, so it's been, I think, down for, for some time. And it's, it's really time to retire the pool. We're also working on a design for Liberty Bell Park, on what we're going to do after that. Would include playground, restrooms, tennis courts, maybe a picnic shelter as well, so.
Thank you, Nate. Any questions? Does it appear so? Any discussion, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item twenty-three, I'd look for a motion to consider approval to purchase a John Deere Terrain Cut Rough mower for seventy-one thousand thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents off a Sourcewell contract to use at the ballfields at Tazuka Park and Veterans Memorial Park by the Parks Division.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in second. And again, background on this from Nate Powell, Parks and Rec Director.
Mayor and Council, in review of our ballfield maintenance at our, at Tazuka and also at Memorial Field, it came to my attention that we were mowing our, our parks and our ditches, and then we were taking those mowers and putting them on our ballfields. And this is a, a way to transfer weeds and disease onto those ballfields, and we need to maintain them at a high level. You know, sports field maintenance is kind of like a golf course, and you really need to maintain at that level, and you got to have the right equipment. A mower like this, we would actually use within the fence only, and we use it to maintain our fields. It has nice decks, it's floating decks, it's a nice cut, and really, really bring that maintenance up a little bit from, from where we've been in the past. So, and this is also a Sourcewell contract with the state bid pricing. Because the closest dealer for the turf mowers, for sports turfs, is in Iowa, that's, this was the closest one we could get for, for probably John Deere or Toro mowers. And so that's why we can't buy that local, there is not a local dealer for, for golf course type mowers. If there's any questions?
Does it appear so? Thank you, Nate. Any discussion, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And item twenty-four, I'd look for a motion to consider approval to place a donated sculpture at the Seventh Street and Pazwalk Avenue Roundabout at the request of the North Fork Arts Council.
Make a motion for consideration.
Motion in second. And one more time, Nate Powell, our Parks and Rec Director.
Last time, thank you. So this is a sculpture for Seventh and Pazwalk Roundabout. The Arts Council is requesting for a placement of that. It's included in your packet, a picture of that. It was donated by an anonymous donor, so there's no cost with the sculpture itself. The park staff would, would do the install. If approved tonight, we would look at costs for, to fund the installation or the base or supplies that are needed, and go back to the Arts Council and ask for that funding. I think it's going to be less than two thousand dollars, but that's what the plan is. Questions?
And if approved, do you know when that would be put in place?
I think we have it and ready to go. I, I think we would look at a, a base design and get that approved with the Arts Council and move on it right away.
Very good. It's good to see what the North Fork Public Arts Council recently established, a new effort, working with Parks and Rec to do something like this and further beautify the community. I think it's a good thing. And I think the sculpture that's been identified is a nice fit for that particular area. So Nate, appreciate you working on that partnership to make it happen, and also to speak to previous issues, bringing about the resources within Parks and Rec to do the work that's necessary to maintain what we have and improve things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just, and the reason I believe that this one particular roundabout was chosen was the North Fork's first roundabout, and so designation was chosen for that reason.
And it's already nicely landscaped and irrigated and ready to go, so.
Mayor and Council, at the request of the city attorney, I did go visit the sculpture. There were some concern that due to the metal construction, it might glare and cause some issues with, with traffic. It, it is a metal, but it's been, it's been sanded down, so there's no glare to it. I wouldn't foresee any kind of glare issues coming off that.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney. Any other discussion? No comments, Council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And last but not least, item number twenty-five, under administrative reports, we will hear a presentation of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, along with the related auditor's letter. And to present this report, Randy Gates, our city finance officer.
Glad to do this. I don't know if any of you noticed, instead of comprehensive annual financial report, like we've had all the years in the past, this is now the annual comprehensive financial report. We switched two letters around.
I caught that.
Probably wonder why, why that was done. There was, somebody figured out that the acronym for comprehensive annual financial report, CFR, which was always pronounced CAFR, was a derogatory racial slur in South Africa.
That's true.
So they thought it was worth changing this to annual comprehensive financial report, or ACFR, which is pronounced AFR, which as far as we know is not a derogatory racial term anywhere, at least not that we've found out so far. So that's why that little change was made. Anyway, to get, get into this, two years ago at this time, we were wrestling with the start of the pandemic, and at that time, we expected a big financial hit from the pandemic. We had a lot of businesses closed, traffic on our streets and highways was way down, and most cities around the country were expecting large reductions in revenues. And we weren't an exception to that. We, when we put the budget together in May and June, we were seeing big revenue drops. You know, revenue for May was down fifty percent from the prior year. Our highway allocation for June was down almost twenty percent. Hotel occupation tax was down over sixty percent in May. Food and beverage occupation was down twenty-seven percent. So things were looking bleak, and at that point, we didn't know if that revenue loss was going to get better or get worse. And so we put the budget together for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-one, we were pretty conservative. And we actually projected general fund beginning balance to go down about a half million dollars, and ending balance go down three-quarters of a million dollars. Thankfully, shortly after we put that budget together, directed health measures were eased and lifted, and our revenues started to return to normal. So when you look at this report and some of the budgetary comparison numbers and year-to-year comparisons, you may notice some big swings or big differences, and a lot of that's pandemic-related. We also got significant pandemic-related funding. In January and February of twenty-one, we received two million dollars of CARES Act funding for presumed public safety payroll expenditures related to the pandemic, and this freed-up revenue that we could use for other things. In July, we received our first payment of ARPA funding, over two point one million, with the same amount expected we received this summer, which the council and one of the consent items allocated almost two and a half million of that earlier tonight. Our financial statements, as I mentioned, were significantly impacted due to this pandemic, and we're continuing to see some of that impact. And like I said, we'll have, expect another two point one million dollars of funding in the twenty-one, twenty-two financial statements. If you look at the general fund budget, actual statement on page two and three of the agenda packet, you'll see how some of this impacted our financial statements. Intergovernmental revenue in the general fund is two point four million dollars over budget. Two million dollars of that was the CARES funding for presumed public safety payroll that we did not have budgeted anywhere. As I mentioned, this freed up general fund revenues to be used for other things. One million of that was for additional street projects, which is reflected down towards the bottom of that statement in the transfer section. Seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars was budgeted as a transfer from the general fund and the city highway allocation fund, and the two hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer was budgeted to go the other way from the CHAF fund to the general fund for street maintenance was eliminated. So that got the one million dollars. Transfers out are also over budget because of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of transfers to the capital projects fund of that revenue that was freed up. And that was for things like the police station expansion, boilled baseball turf, and Liberty Bell improvements. I don't know if we're going to get much farther with Liberty Bell than the demolition this year. Taxes are also one point two million dollars over budget, primarily due to sales tax exceeding budget by one point four million dollars due to the very conservative budgeting due to the pandemic, and also the actual growth of our sales tax once we got past the two months where we're really impacted by those directed health measures. The over two point one million of ARPA funding we received in July is shown on the next page, which is the major special revenues fund budget, actual pages. We actually created a new fund that's in the far-right columns of that report, and that was based on recommendations from the state auditor's office. I thought that that should be its own separate fund, and the expenditures reflected in that fund. As of the end of last fiscal year, none had been spent, and we haven't spent any of it yet this year, so that's just all showing in fund balance. During the more general overview of the city's financial activity, I think the best place to look for that is the two government-wide financial statements, which are on pages one sixty and one sixty-one. These statements are prepared on the full accrual basis of accounting, similar to how most businesses prepare their financial statements. So there's even depreciation included in the expense columns in, in these financial statements. We've actually got three different bases of financial reporting in this one annual comprehensive financial report. We've got the full accrual basis, which is what these fund-level, or citywide-level financial statements are. Fund level are on modified accrual, and then by law, in Nebraska, you budget on a cash basis, or budget actual comparisons that I was just referring to earlier, they're all on the cash basis. So that can make things confusing, but I think most people are used to how businesses report, and what is on those citywide financial statements is real similar to how businesses report. You accrue your expenses, you depreciate your fixed assets, or you pay debt, kind of like, sort of like real-world accounting, instead of like government accounting. At the top of that statement of activities, the various government functions are listed down the left-hand side. So this is things like public safety, public works, library, solid waste. And these expenses, as I mentioned, are on the full accrual basis. And if you look at public safety, you can see that there was over twelve million dollars of public safety expense, which is by far the city's largest activity. And this is expense related to the police, fire, EMS, and emergency management. The next three columns are program revenues derived from operation of these functions, broken down into three categories. Charges for services, the first of those columns, and continue to use public safety as the example. You'll see there was a little over one point one million of charges for services for public safety. The lion's share of that is the charge for ambulance services. That was about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of that number. Also in that number are fees paid to the rural, by the rural fire district, nine-one-one fees paid by Stanton County and Hoskins. And there's some other small items in there. Next column over is operating grants and contributions. The city received two million five hundred and fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars of these revenues for public safety. And the biggest part of that's at two million dollars of presumptive public safety payroll I mentioned earlier. That's where this shows on the citywide financial statements. And there's also other pandemic-related funding in there. We were getting reimbursed for actual payroll that wasn't overtime, or that it was overtime. The presumptive public safety payroll was non-overtime. We were getting reimbursed for actual overtime that was COVID-related. We were getting reimbursed for supplies, materials, masks, and some of those kind of things, cleaning supplies and sanitizer, that kind of thing. That's what is in there. And then also the normal funding that goes in there, like our municipal finance organization revenues in there, YRS nine-one-one allocation, schools, sharing the school resource officer, but the big chunk of that money is that presumptive public safety payroll. And finally, you get to the capital grants and contributions column, there wasn't much of that public safety. There was six thousand dollars of donations for the police dog. So that's what's showing in that column as capital grants, because he's capitalized on our books. I forget what we have for a useful life for him, but he's capitalized and depreciated. And the net cost of public safety after applying those revenues is eight point four million dollars. And except for public works, all the governmental activities had a net cost of service in that column, where you take expenses minus the three different revenue sources. And that's exactly what you'd expect. Public Works is a little different, and it had a positive two point six million dollars. So Steve made us two point six million dollars this year. Way to go, Steve. What happens in, in, in public works is the big area where it happens. You'll have a lot of capital grants and contributions in many cases. So those capital grants and contributions go in that program revenues column on the right, and they will end up getting depreciated then over however many years that asset is expected to last. And in, this last year, we had capital grants and contributions of three and a half million dollars for special assessments for streets, and another two million dollars for developer dedicated streets to the city. And so the value of those, including the underlying land, goes into those revenue sources. And then in the case of streets, it'll be depreciated over the next thirty years. So that makes for some weird-looking stuff where it looks like Steve's doing a great job, which he is, but making us two point six million dollars, we should give him a raise, I guess. But everything else is like you would expect. The governmental activities all have more expenses than they do revenue. The proprietary functions or business-type activities are maybe below that. We have four of those. We've got water, sewer, solid waste, and storm sewer. In most cases, you expect those to have revenues exceeding expenses because it are operated kind of like a business. And they should be, in most cases, you'll see those with revenues in excess of expenditures. And the reason for that is we've got large capital costs for most of the funds that show up in our master plan out of ten or twenty years, and we're accumulating some money to pay for that. And we also don't want to let our reserves go down, so we, we're trying to make a little money on each one of those. Bottom half, once you get below those listing of specific activities, is where the general revenues are shown, and that's the revenues that go to pay the general revenues are shown and that's the revenues that go to pay the negative like $8 million some dollars of police, fire and public safety, general government, those kinds of things. By far our largest general revenue is sales tax, which increased almost 14% despite the pandemic, going from 9.2 million to 10 and a half million. And our next largest revenue source is NPPD lease revenue. That didn't change a whole lot and that's in the line labeled general revenue from electric distribution system lease. It increased just slightly, going from $4,553,874 to $4,588,16. Our third largest revenue source is property tax that increased 10.2%, going from $4,495, $422 to $4,954,639. That's because we're letting our property tax grow with assessed valuation. We had a 11% increase in assessed valuation that year. When you combine these general revenues with the net revenues or expenditures by activity shown above, you get a change in net position for the year. And that's somewhere in net income in a, in a business. And this is towards the bottom of the statement. And as you can see, the city's net position increased 15.3 million, so kind of like our net income for the year. And the city had a change in auditors this year. We had been with Hayes and Associates for eight years. Their contract expired last year and we went through the RFP process and selected BKD for the next five years as the city's auditors. BKD is a national firm with significant, significant government eye and experience. And their reports are, well, the first one is the opinion on the financial statements, which is on pages 141 to 143 of the ACFR. This report is a clean opinion stating our financial statements are in compliance with GAAP. And most of the audit reports are on the single audit section of our ACFR towards the end on pages 251, starts there and then goes through the end of the report. The very first part of that single audit section was a schedule of expenditure of federal awards. We prepared that and that's what, one of the things that they're actually auditing. Shows a total of 2.4 million of federal expenditures with 2.1 million of CARES funding being by far the largest of those programs. You may notice that there's no ARPA funding on that report, even though we got all that ARPA revenue, 2.1 million. We haven't spent any of it and just tonight designated a portion of it. So that isn't going to show up until starting next year when we start spending it for this year we're in, but a year from now, when you look at that report, you see an ARPA expenditures on there. The next largest funding source is community development block grant with $233,000 spent from CDPG funding, primarily for the River Point Square Park downtown and also for some on Brash Avenue construction. And then there are several audit reports towards the end of that se- this section. There's a report on internal control and related to financial reporting and compliance with laws and regs. There, there's a report on internal control and compliance for our major federal programming, federal program, which was our CARES funding, scheduled findings and questions cost. And then following this section, there's a management letter. All those audit reports are clean reports, so you know findings or question cost. Any answering questions?
Any audit adjustments needed after that it was presented?
We had several small audit adjustments. I'm trying to think what those were. I think they're actually listed in the report.
But they're, are they resolved?
Yes, we, when they suggested we make those adjustments, we made those. I'd say more years than not, we don't have a lot of adjustments. And some of these adjustments were related to things we've been doing the same way for a long, long time. New auditors come in and looked at it and said, no, this is not how we should be doing according to generally accepted accounting principles. And we had something similar to that on the Northeast Nebraska Solid Waste Coalition financial statements laid out, we're presenting Asian investments. And we've been doing that ever since the coalition started in 1995, been doing it that way. We went through probably four different auditors. And nobody questioned it until these guys. And I thought, geez, I would have thought somebody would have questioned. I went back and dug back to see one that, the Italian pronouncement, one in effect, said you should do it this way instead of the way we were doing it. And it was in 1992, if I remember right. I know it was before the coalition even started. So a lot went to time and, and nobody caught it, but it's not unusual when you change auditing firms and who set eyeballs on those things where they'll see something that the other guys didn't see and bring that to your attention. And that happened with a few things like that this year. When I said I wasn't at all surprised, that normally happens.
Thank you.
Did you see value in that, Randy, having a new auditing agency doing just that, putting fresh eyes on something and maybe, maybe catching some things that?
That's valuable, they'll catch things the other guys didn't catch, just like what I was mentioning with the solid waste coalition. So yeah, I think it is good every once in a while to change auditing firms. It's, it's a pain because they gotta go in and document all your procedures and get their work paper filed and more, so it takes a lot of extra time in the first year on their part and on our part. It's nothing we do lightly, but I think it is a good thing to do every once in a while.
Randy, you had mentioned the old firm. Did you, maybe I missed it, did you mention how long we had?
Eight years.
Eight years, okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Randy, for that detailed report. And I think it's a good opportunity to thank you and the fiscal staff and the entire administrative staff for the meticulous attention paid to this process and navigating the budget processes year in and year out. And it's worth noting that despite unpredictable, tumultuous past two years, there's a lot of things that we can be grateful for, that we in fact have a surplus in sales tax receipts due to a robust local economy and the fact that local businesses have, have chosen to reinvest and the community has, have supported them in that, in that endeavor that we're maintaining a healthy cash reserve through all this. And that we've utilized grant resources and extra funding available to us to move forward large infrastructure and quality of life improvement projects that are helping the community continue to, to grow and helping improve quality of life throughout North Fork for all its citizens. So a lot of good news within that report when you look at it, given all that we've gone through in the last couple of years. So with that, I would ask if there's any further comments or questions, counsel, on the report? And if not, that is the last thing on our agenda. So we are concluded and this meeting of the North Fork City Council is adjourned. Thank you.